I would like to open the regular planning board meeting for two point two third. We are bringing videotape and sent out live. And first up, our administrative board. First is Hicks Bridge Landing Commission. Review and approve quotes for the purchase of docks at the Hicks Bridge Landing. Somebody please explain this.
Yeah, so this is a, there were a series of grants that Jim Hartnett had applied for, I think when he was the town planner, and then he, there were some ARPA grants that were applied for from Jeff Bull. Anyway, they, uh, this is all part of, I had brought before the, the plan to pave Hicks Bridge Landing to better manage the stormwater. So this is all kind of more part of that larger project. This is just a piece of the project to upgrade the, um, the floats there to something that's a little bit sturdier, and I guess they're not in great shape. So Jeff wanted to see if we could spend some of the money to upgrade the floats. I checked with this, this, uh, with DCR to see if we could use some of the ARPA funds for that, and they said yes. And they put that in the contract when we, um, got the contract together with them. So we put it out to a couple of different quotes, contacted a couple of different firms. So the reason why we need planning board approval is because we need an elected board to approve the expenditure.
What do, I see the email from Jeff mentions the quotes, but it doesn't include how much the floats are, or specs or anything like that.
There's a couple of different quotes in here, um, for the floats. The one that was recommended from the landing commission was the one from Board and Light. And that one came to forty-six thousand seven hundred fifty. Um, and then there was one from EZ Dock, which was forty-one thousand four hundred ninety. Um, I'm going to defer to the landing commission's recommendation on this because I don't
But they have the money.
About these types of floats, yeah.
The town has the money.
Yeah, we have the money and grant funds for this.
Well, it says the grant is from the planning board. I don't understand that email.
We've been managing the grants. This was something, uh, there was initially a grant that Jim Hartnett had applied for through the Seaport Economic Council, and that's been extended a number of times for this project. And then the ARPA funds were just something that was kind of inherited by the planning board.
So are you saying is it, is the match?
No, the ARPA money is gonna pay the fifty, there's a fifty thousand dollar ARPA grant, and that will pay for this float.
It's, it's still there?
Yep. Yep. Yeah, we, we had the, um, the, the, the funds were, were committed, um, for this purpose, so we can still spend them.
Yeah, but I don't know how long you have to spend those.
Right, right.
But Jim is saying that it's still, but
Yeah.
I remember allocating it, but I didn't want to.
Are the floats in the same layout as they are now? Because the original plan wasn't gonna be the same layout.
They, the, the floats have to be in the same layout because of the way, yeah. If they change, if the layout were to change, then they would have to go through the conservation commission to change the permitting for it.
Yeah, they would need waterway licenses, and it means a lot of permitting.
Right.
But they're saying if they don't, if they build, if they just replace them in situ.
Yeah, and it's been run by Chris Capone in conservation, and so it's, it's fine as long as it's, you're just replacing them. Then that's fine by the commission.
Is it like this drawing on EZ Dock? Fifty feet long, fifty feet wide?
That's about right.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's similar to that one, but that's not the, the recommended one. The, the Board and Light, I mean, didn't include a, an image of it.
Is there a special seat? For the baywatcher to sit?
Yeah, I need a seat. The lazy boy.
I couldn't tell you. I'm, I'm going off of the recommendation from the landing commission. This is really more in their court, so.
Well, you want a motion, Mr. Chair? Uh, even though it doesn't include a watercook lazy boy for the baywatch, I would move that the planning board approved, based on the recommendation of the landing commission, the quote from, what's the name of the firm?
Board and Light.
Board and Light for forty-six thousand, uh, whatever the exact amount is.
Right.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay for me, please. I don't see the, I don't see the purpose of just replacing them. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do a project, you want it. They needed more docks, but they needed larger floats. And this is just, it's not gaining anything. Spending a lot of money.
Well, that'd be a good float, and it can be added to the wrong sections.
It's working now, you know, it's just the cleats pull out of the float. And the floats are serviceable. You don't injure yourself walking down there, but they, they, they're probably reached the end of their life several years ago. But I think in terms of maintenance, in size, it's active down there, but those floats handle the traffic that's there. And, uh, it's, it seems that, you know, with the problem with the masons and everything else, the huge project dream that everybody talked about is not gonna happen. And so doing this incrementally, you know, if we've got some money for the floats, do that. And then later on, if there's money for paving, do that. I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Jeff, I mean, you get a lot of traffic from the ramp, and some of that uses the dock, some of it doesn't. Uh, and then you've got Dharma Voyage in and out of there all the time, but, uh, the current layout is, uh, you know, can handle that traffic. The, uh, as sea level goes up, the inboard end of that dock resting on the sand gets kind of low on the, you know, can, can get a little bit close on its wharf.
Yeah, you mentioned the ramp. I think that has been, that was cited as being, needing rebuilt because it's, uh, that it's cracked to where it's, yeah, it's not, it's not a very safe way to launch a boat, and I, I remember that, but the, the issue of these floats. And are we, so are we talking about the T configuration?
Both.
Not the R?
Both. I, I think the docks that go out to the T and the T get replaced, according to the drawing.
So there's ten floats, so there's five going out and then five across.
Yeah, okay, because I'm, there's another sketch here, another proposal, and you're saying that's not the one they're, they want, an L-shaped one.
It's replacing whatever is in, in the spot, um, today. So whatever they're currently using, this is gonna go in the exact same place and format.
Okay.
Chair, so, so John said about the masons, so, and yesterday's selectmen's meeting. Last week, I had asked Jamie for the deed, so he gave me a copy, I guess, whatever they had here, but I told him to try to get a copy from the registry deeds. There's stuff Xed down on the deed. And I also asked him if he could, there's, there's gotta be some kind of agreement with the deed, you know, just have a deed deal, however it was transferred. So like, I'm aware of, someone just gave me the deed to the Holy Ghost Club and the, and the agreement with the Holy Ghost Club. Like, some of these things have, you know, they might have had a ninety-nine year agreement. They might even be up, you know, just because you see the deed. Because it was transferred for whatever it was, like for a hundred bucks or whatever. So hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, I'll have that.
That'd be good.
Okay, so that's gone. The next thing is nine fifty-eight Sodom Road. There's a purchase and sale agreement on our chapter forty-eight release comments for sixty-one A.
Yeah.
And, um,
This is a parcel. It's a large parcel. Um, it's under, right up here. It's right off of Adamsville Road. The select board has asked for comments from, from the planning board. It's under purchase and sales agreement for three million dollars to Bill Camara. So I would anticipate some kind of application coming forward for this property.
So it looks like entry broke is going right through it.
Yep, right, well, in the back, so it doesn't go through it. It's out, out, it might be kind of hard to see, but it's outlined in green here.
Yeah, but you got, you got wetlands in between there, too.
Yeah.
So, you got a lot of wetlands, so.
I, I also don't believe the wetlands have been delineated there, so this is just, yeah.
It borders property that I think, although the, the L-shaped property is to the west of east, is, uh, close to being acquired by Puzzles Bay.
Okay.
And, uh, I, I don't believe that this property is, would be assessed, would be not assessed, but, uh, that anybody in the real estate business would say it's worth three hundred dollars.
We've talked to a lot of people about this property over the last, probably the last two years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's been on, it's been listed for quite a while.
It's, it's been on the market for three million dollars, and they won't sell it for less.
Yep.
It's my opinion that, uh, that we should recommend to the select board, it should be preserved in that rest. And let them make the decision. I think it's an important part of that whole entry broke area, especially the way into the back. And you're gonna screw up a lot of wetlands to get to that open length in the back. I, I think that, uh, I think Puzzles Bay and Land Trust have been trying to make a deal on this property. But they can't pay any more than the assessed value. So they think it's probably worth that.
One point five, if you're saying.
So to break up, to sell that, and then have somebody do ANRs along the front, because that's easy. They could never make money paying three million dollars for it. Maybe you get five lots out of it.
Right.
So I don't know what the select board would do, but I, I believe it should be not released at the moment.
You want a motion?
I don't know, just talk about it.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Jim. I can't tell from this map if there's other, uh, Land Trust, Westport Land Trust properties neighbor, nearby.
Uh, I can identify them.
Just, just curious, that's all.
Oh, sorry.
So the, the Land Trust property there in this paint part.
Okay, so there is one, right there.
And what is orange? Is that sixty-one A or?
It's just labeled on here as private, so there's some other sort of restriction on, on the land. Preventing development, but we'd have to look into it.
Yeah, because I assume all the small house lots are private. And orange.
Most of that, uh, at least around Adamsville Road, that stuff is in, in, um,
Sixty-one A.
No, not sixty-one A, um, APR.
APR.
So and some of it, some of it is in APR as well as conservation restrictions from the Land Trust that are written into the deeds. So the, you know, you see Adamsville Road coming down, you see Sodom Road, all that stuff to the left at that intersection is, uh, is APR. And, um, the stuff to the right of that intersection on this side, on the bottom side, is all APR. And Oars is right on the corner there, that's APR. Uh, and then up there, around the bend, you got Weatherlow Farm.
Yep.
And you've got some land that was just put into APR, uh, by the Land Trust.
Puzzles Bay has also been talking to this landowner here, where the curse is.
Yep. So I, I think it's, I, I think it would be not good to have, you could get fifty, sixty houses in it. So.
I just pointed, a point of information, on the, planning board designated Open Space Committee, and our first meeting, I think we're reconfigured now, is tomorrow, out at the Land Trust property on Adamsville Road.
Okay.
And I don't know whether this will be on the agenda. Chris Capone is the managing person of the Open Space.
Well, I think Chris is aware of the problems with this lot, uh, because of the wetlands. So, uh, I've driven by this forever. It had a sign on it, forever for sale. And it didn't show that it went all the way and connected with the, the land lots from the main road.
But they have to buy it, right? You have to in order to come to it.
Yeah.
So they've got someone willing to pay three million bucks.
Maybe. They, they have a year to go through the due diligence. Like, get a wetlands delineation, go through wetlands, uh, go through conservation to see if they can get a road through there and replicate somewhere, which never works out very well. So, anyway, I, I, I still would, would like to give our opinion as that we should not release it, that we should.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I, I would move that we communicate with the select board recommending that on seven fifty-eight Sodom Road, the town not release, uh, the chapter forty-eight restriction.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Granite Post Road, file number thirteen dash oh oh two C.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, so I provided an update in the form of SW Coal's final review of the final road as built, um, at the last planning board meeting on May twentieth, twenty twenty-five. And so the Planning Department, Highway, and Assessors Department do hold copies of this. Uh, no surety was recommended to be retained for the grass growth. The developer has added starter fertilizer. That was kind of the last comment from SW Coal, so as we have the final as-built, staff does recommend that the board motion to release the remaining eight thousand seven hundred held in surety.
So, um, who's the consulting assistant here on this?
Uh, Derek Mello, SW Coal. We had gone over his final reviews, um.
So they've already planted?
Yep.
Grass?
It's established.
Yes.
It's started?
Yep.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I, I move that we release the remaining surety of eighty-seven hundred dollars on Granite Post Road, on the Granite Post Road project. Based on staff agreement.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is Little Compton Housing Trust, file number twenty-four dash oh two eight C dash RRL. We want to endorse a Form F covenant.
Yes, so at the May twentieth, twenty-five, twenty twenty-five planning board meeting, we did have the board endorse a Form F covenant and a Form F RRL for the Little Compton Housing Trust. Um, the Form F was accidentally misplaced, so a fresh Form F was sent over. I'll pass along the signature page.
It didn't do blue ink, no?
Oh, I.
I know. I didn't see that until after I signed it, so.
Is there another copy?
As long as one signature is in blue ink, that's okay. John Blard usually signs in blue, so we should be okay.
Only sign in blue?
Thank you, and thank you for that.
Oh, really? The registry signed with just one?
So you can't get in trouble anymore?
So we can identify what's the original.
Gotcha.
Registry doesn't care.
Third grade.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's so we can recognize.
So do, do all registries require blue ink now, or is it historic?
So I'm not sure, I don't think the registry actually requires it, so we are able to differentiate what's the original and what are the copies. Because sometimes it can be hard when it's all in black ink, like.
But I thought the registry rejected some of the things we said.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
They rejected it based on, was this the original or not?
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so we signed the format, so support letter for municipal vulnerability preparedness coalition. Request to endorse support letter to request an increase of municipal vulnerability preparedness funds in Governor Healy's environmental bond bill. If somebody could explain that?
Yeah, I got a request from the, um, from the director of the Mystic River Waterstrad Association. His name's Nasser Brahman. They, the governor is going to submit an environmental bond bill, which will include some, uh, it's, this is one of the, the pieces of legislation that, um, includes funding for the MVP program. And what they're asking is for municipalities, given the situation with the federal government rolling back funds for, um, climate resilience projects, to request that the governor includes additional funds in the, in the next round of funding, um, for the MVP program on an annual basis. This is, it says, uh, to, to protect and maintain the one hundred million dollars per year, for the MVP, or to increase bonding authority to that target level. So what they're asking for us to sign on to is to request that the governor includes more funds in the MVP program moving forward into the future, given the fact that the federal funds that we used to rely on are no longer there.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Uh, sure.
We, we don't have a, such a letter before us, do we?
Yeah, we do.
There's one in.
This is, this is a draft on page forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
And I assume we're gonna fill in the real names before we send it?
We don't, we don't actually need to sign it. He, the, he said that it just, they want a bunch of endorsements to add to the letter. So it's, we don't actually need to sign it.
I, I move that we, um, approve the draft letter, uh, to, um, in support of, uh, mu, the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Coalition, and, uh, which requests an increase in municipal vulnera, vulnerability preparedness funds in the environmental bond bill.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness two point O, request to purchase emergency kit items.
This is a pilot project for the MVP two point O, so, um, this is the project that we've had a couple of community volunteers working on, as well as Jeff Canton and Michael Yoggman, doing community engagement over the last two years. And at the end of this project, we're able to implement a, a pilot project. And so through the community engagement process, we had a couple of different pilot projects that we, uh, surveyed the community on. And through the survey results, it was determined that we would, um, pull together some emergency kits that would be distributed throughout the community. We would, uh, first give priority to the town's environmental justice community, and then distribute to the, the town at large. So there's a list of, a variety of different items, um, in a memo that I included in your packets. We will be purchasing these, well, provided that the planning board approves, just due to the dollar amount, we have to have the board approve it. It's fifty thousand dollars. And then we'll begin acquiring the items and, and distributing them in the town. We'll be partnering with, trying to work on partnering with, um, one of the churches next to the environmental justice community to have a distribution event, but then afterwards, um, we'll work with the food pantry to distribute and try to, um, tack on to various different events in town, as we did with some of the community engagement in the past, to then distribute those to community members who come to those events.
Okay, I, I thought that one of the projects was potentially getting, um, help with, uh, taking care of, um, overhanging tree limbs and dead trees in people's yards.
We can't.
Didn't make it?
So we, there's a bit of a story behind that. What, what we initially had discussed with the group was to actually take down some of those hazard trees. That is not something that the MVP program would fund. Our, our regional rep, Courtney Brokaw, really advocated for that because, um, we had been told that the funds could be spent pretty much however the community decides, but, um, as with many grant programs, they won't fund maintenance. And that fell into the category of maintenance. So we did poll on, like, doing some mapping of hazard trees, but it didn't rank as highly as the emergency kits.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
Where, where would, um, where would these kits go? I mean, there's a, there's about a thousand kits. Who, are they in the schools, the town hall?
They'll be distributed with, with residents.
Oh, to residents?
To residents, yep.
Then they go to eBay. So I'm sure that, that won't happen.
Okay.
So I would, I would hope that some could be left in, like, the town hall, or the annex, of the, maybe the, the nurse's office. People could pick them up, or the veterans, they could pick them up if they want.
Um, I would imagine that we'll have leftovers, so, yeah.
Okay, so I'd entertain a motion to endorse this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a friend in, uh, Los Angeles who was called in the middle of the night to evacuate. He got in his car with, uh, nothing but what was on the, you know, the closing was worn. Evacuate from those fires, so I think the idea of emergency kits that are, you know, in a boat, you can throw them a ditch bag.
Yep.
Is really important, uh, because you want this stuff accessible, identifiable. You can grab it on the run, uh, when you go. I think it's, I hope, you hope they're never used, but, um, I think it's, it's important for people to have. And if we can help a thousand people get them, then I think that's, makes us more resilient. So I would move we approve the purchase of a thousand emergency preparedness kits as described in the memo from Michael Burris.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It carries. And I think it isn't just a thousand individuals, it's a thousand households.
Thousand households.
Right, good point, yeah. So it's more than a thousand individuals.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a thousand households.
One of my, I have two sons, both living in Cal, in LA. But they do, one of them has their own, they put together their own kit. And they have, because they've been through these evacuations, through fire, through earthquakes, flooding, everything, so. And they're kind of self-prepared. But it's a, it's kind of a way of life out there. And so many people do it on their own. But we, we're not exposed, fortunately, yet, to that, those kind of disasters. So this is a good idea to have these, make them available for people. Hopefully it'll catch on and more people will start doing it themselves.
All we need is a big hurricane.
Right.
I mean, there's so many low-lying houses now along the shore.
Well, I think when we do this, picking up on Mark's point, it would be good if we send that to shorelines, so they get a picture of what the emergency kit looks like, what's in it, and the need for it, so that it encourages people who have the wherewithal to get their own.
Right.
I, you know, because I think.
And the items in here aren't intended to be, you know, the end-all, be-all. It's just, you know, a handful, a couple of things that, you know, get people started and get that idea moving, you know, in their head.
What we need.
Yeah, right. And we'll have some additional informational pamphlets about disaster preparedness.
And what else they could add to this.
Right, right.
That's great. Okay, next is the overdue consultant review fee balance from file number twenty-three dash oh-two-eight SPA dash LID, plat twenty-one lot eight A, also called Mellow, Mellow's Way. We have a request to engage town council to collect overdue consultant review fee balance from applicant Bucky LeBlanc after refusal to remit payment. So he's, he's verbally said he's not gonna do it?
We asked, he, Dia called him and we were saying that we need to have the payment. And he, we've been asking him to pay for months now. Finally get ahold of him and he hung up on her. And I think the message is clear, so we, we need to escalate it to, to get this paid.
How much is it?
It's nearly.
Nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
Can we just send it to small claims?
Yeah, we could. I've done, I've done that before.
Yeah.
Nine of our peers? I've done it.
Yeah.
Well, town council would, I mean.
Yeah, you should be able to make up, make up the pay.
Town council may recommend doing just that.
Yeah.
Right.
Do you want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I move that in the matter of Ms. LeBlanc refusing to pay what he promised to pay, that we engage town council to collect the overdue consultant review fee from Ms. LeBlanc.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next is a letter to Massachusetts Energy, Energy Facilities Siting Board.
So Jim, this is a letter that you had penned and, well, Serpent had penned and you had signed on to. And it outlines a number of different issues with the twenty-twenty-four Climate Act with, with respect to citing of renewable energy facilities. And I think the long and short of it is that the, the act will no longer allow special permits for solar energy facilities, for example. And that it, the approvals will be taken out of local hands and be given to a power citing, the power citing board. And so there are a handful of issues outlined in this letter that Serpent had identified as places for improvement. So for example, restricting the ability of the power citing board to allow a solar facility or an energy facility in a flood zone, for example. Strengthening wetlands protections, making sure that the facilities are not cited in, in public water supplies areas, you know. We don't want these kinds of facilities located in our aquifer protection districts. And then giving, giving some additional protections to, or greater consideration to agricultural, like, prime agricultural soils in their review process. That's pretty relevant for Westport. And then addressing some of the, the interplay between how this, the, the, the citing of the site, or citing of the facility will interact with local master plans, open space plans, things like that. And then there are a couple of other one, other items addressing the decommissioning. So I guess there wasn't language for decommissioning and the environmental risks associated with that. So they, for example, recommended mandating a financial insurance, assurance mechanism to make sure that the decommissioning is fully covered and it doesn't fall upon the municipality. So there, there are a handful of different points in, in this letter that Serpent had penned, but we had sent to the, we had sent to the Energy Facility Siting Board this week.
So we've sent it already?
Yeah.
If the comment period closed.
Yep.
Yeah.
You need a, a vote to approve it?
Yeah, well, we've already sent it, so.
That's the way they do it.
I mean, so my moving.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I would move that we endorse the very well-written and, I think, comprehensive letter to the Energy Facility Siting Board. I think that's a good motion.
Yeah.
I'm second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It, it's crazy. They had an open meeting for comment and then they said, okay, I think you have two weeks to get your written comments in. And, you know, so Serpent was really under the gun and they were, like, already three days late. But they told them that they would still entertain the comments even if they're a few days late. But the people at Serpent who were doing this, writing this letter, were doing it from the environmental standard. And that's basically what this thing all talks about, this, the law. But it, it doesn't talk about the community impact and the impact of, you know, or zoning, you know, setbacks and stuff like that, which I think have been well-used by us and approved in these things. Anyway.
Well, Jim, so does this mean that this citing board would have the ability to override any of our local regulations?
They're, they're still writing up the regulations, even though the law's in effect. And hopefully they'll read the letter and say, geez, we need to put something in for, you know, community, the community itself to do, as opposed to, I don't know how they're ever gonna do this. I mean, there's three hundred and fifty-three towns and cities and how big a citing board are they gonna have that's gonna handle all these applications? I just, I just, I think it's insane.
This came about because of, I mean, I didn't, I haven't heard it, so, about it, so I'm sorry, but.
Well, the, the governor signed this, this, this law into existence, I think in October or September. But it didn't take effect immediately, but, because they don't have the citing board in place. I don't know how they're gonna do that. It just seems crazy. I mean.
Yeah.
It, it seems like counter to what Massachusetts has always been, the home role.
Home rule state, right.
And it's like forty B on steroids. You know, this, this lot that we looked at, it's almost a hundred acres. You could probably put solar in the back there and make much more than you could if you're gonna put roads and everything else in for houses. And then would we have any input? Because what they're supposed to do, the applicant, is supposed to go and do community outreach before they even put the application in to the state. But how's that gonna work? I mean, what is, what's the definition of community outreach that's gonna pass muster? Does that mean they come to the planning board? I don't think so. I think it means that they call a meeting in, at the auditorium in the school and anybody who comes can speak up and, it just.
Well, I mean, our regulations, our solar regulations will limit the size of a large-scale solar array to twelve acres.
Twelve acres.
Does that mean somebody could come in with an application for a bigger, a larger?
I think so.
Twenty acres?
I think so.
Yeah, it's twelve acres of clearance, so if you're not clearing, you could be bigger, right?
It talks about in here, you know, farmland and good farmland and land that could be used for farming, using the soil evaluation maps that they have. But, you know, are they really gonna do that? I don't know. I don't know who's gonna be on this board. And so, I don't know, I hope they have some more public outreach because I think this is crazy and, you know.
If every town seats a number of spots like, like this, that's a lot of spots in Massachusetts.
So, okay. Resilient Coast Draft Plan, opportunity for comments until June twelfth, opportunity for endorsement.
Mr. Chair, I asked at the last meeting, this draft plan had just come out and I'd asked that we add this to the agenda for tonight's meeting because it's the last meeting before the deadline on, on comments. And I think, I haven't read the whole plan, but I think we should take advantage of offering comments in a, a letter to whomever it goes to. And one point I noticed in the release of the plan, I mean, clearly, Westport has been doing an awful lot of work in the issue of resilience. And we have also, in the project involving East Beach, talked about the issue of voluntary managed retreat with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. And the thing that I noted in this draft plan was a section on voluntary managed retreat. And if, you know, at some point, that's gonna have to happen. I don't know whether it's twenty years from now or fifty years from now. And if it's voluntary, it may be twenty years from now for one owner who wants to take advantage of it, and fifty years from someone who says, no, I'm gonna stay here till I'm swimming in my living room. But whatever the case, we're gonna need state funds to do this. And, because Westport, or any town for that matter, is not gonna be able to afford the acquisition of the number of properties that are gonna need, need to be acquired over time. So I think we may make, may wanna make other points about this plan. I think there are a lot of issues that have come up in our resilience plan of things that need to be done. And getting financial support for those, whether it's infrastructure work or whether it's, you know, how to deal with heat and public health, they all cost money. And this is clearly, right now, a priority of the state. And I think we should write a letter that commends the effort and mentions that state funding is going to be critical for implementing recommendations that come out of resilience plans. And one of the biggest ticket items is bound to be managed retreat, which is already going on in some communities in Massachusetts. Not going on yet in Westport, but, you know, it, it will affect us at some point. So I think the main thing is to say, we're interested in this issue. We've been working on it with a lot of members of the community for three or four or five years, however long it's been. And state funding for items like managed retreat is, is key if we're gonna turn talk into action.
Let's see.
I'm sorry.
Wow. That probably blew all of our audience out of their lazy voice. So I would, I would move we send such a letter as part of our, as our comments.
I agree. Second then. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll draft a letter and we'll circulate it with you all, so you can look at the language beforehand.
Well, I think all these things were related.
Yeah.
The Buzzards Bay report that we did last week in this program was really interesting. There's already pushback to, well, they didn't say what I thought they should say.
Right. It's a problem with science. You can't control the truth.
Well, the, the other thing, I mean, just to be realistic about this, the, the pressure on the state. Because as somebody was saying a minute ago, the federal government's pulling back on their funding. So the pressure on states to, to step in and provide additional funding on all various matters is, is enormous. So, you know, good luck, but I can only hope for the best, but, you know.
But, you know, as John said last year, I think, sometime, everybody said, no, we don't want managed retreat. Yet there were four or five of those lots for sale.
Yep.
Which means that those people wanted out.
Yep.
And the problem is, how do you find the money to buy them? Because you could do that incrementally, you know, it doesn't have to be done all in one year.
It can't be done all in one year. I mean, incremental is the way to do it, because you point out that four or five people, you know, we were told, nobody on East Beach wants to sell. Nobody. That's what the leaders said. And then there's four for sale signs down there saying, well, four people wanna sell. Five people wanna sell. And if, and they were at prices that the Coalition for Buzzards Bay had kind of factored in, they weren't outrageous prices, they were market prices. And if that program had been in place, that'd be, you know, four or five lots.
Be a start.
That it would be in public ownership, not to be developed. And it's a start. And when you start. And when you start something like that, people start to notice, you know, "Oh, you took advantage of that? Maybe that's not such a bad idea. And, you know, my kids don't want this, I'm getting older, you know, if I get lifetime tenancy." You know, that, that could make sense for me. You know, it depends on people's circumstances. Some people don't wanna do it, fine. That's why it's gotta be voluntary. But if it's voluntary, it's a good idea for the long term, and it's certainly gonna need state approval.
There are three lots for sale right now.
State funding, three lots for sale right now.
Right now.
See? Yeah, exactly. This could be put into place immediately.
So who's gonna write the letter?
Mike is gonna write it and circulate it.
Yep.
All right. Planner's report?
Got a couple of upcoming public meetings. There's the Cold Water Cul- Cold Water Culverts, the culverts on Drift Road and Cornell Road. That is coming up on Thursday this week, it, which is the 5th, at 6 o'clock at the library. And then our next Hazard Mitigation Plan meeting is coming up. That's this month as well. Let me get the poster. June 16th at 6:00 PM.
Great picture on the Cold Water Culverts.
It is a, another one at the library. And then we have some additional Barrier Beach Planning meetings coming up. We don't have anything scheduled, but keep an eye out for those. There'll be more opportunities to get involved with that project.
Do you think that that process is gonna come up with, what, what's gonna be the end, end product?
It's a draft beach management plan.
Right.
So it's going to outline, well, one of the things that we had set out to do was to outline all of the things that, all the management practices that the town currently undertakes, what are the recommended best practices for that, the applicable regulations that are in place. So from the Wetlands Act to the Danger Species Act, zoning, or like, not zoning, but FEMA flood plane permitting, all those kinds of things will be represented in this plan. It'll only be a draft, because we're not going to submit it to DEP for permitting. A second iteration of the, the process we're applying to CZM, applying to CZM again, for a grant to continue the process of getting the Barrier Beach Management Plan to full permitting. So that'll take more public engagement, as well as action from the Select Board as well. So it'll come up with some recommendations for the town, it'll come up with some recommendations for how private landowners can be managing their land in a way that is lessening the, or managing their land in a way that is more consistent with natural forces. Granted, even if the, the Select Board adopts the management plan, they can't regulate how the private land is being used. So it would only, you know, the, the regulatory aspects would only apply to the town's land. But there'll be recommendations in there for that. We'll come up with some figures on what it would cost for beach nourishment. And then there may be some longer-term considerations, like, does the town, what does the town continue to do with the road when it's broken apart in pieces from storm events? So does the town consider downgrading the road at some point to like, kind of like a cobble road that would, or does the town continue to, continue to pave that road in the aftermath of those storms? And it'll also have recommendations for beach, we tend to focus on East Beach a lot, but it'll have recommendations for Beach Avenue and Atlantic Avenue as well. So there'll be recommendations on how those landowners can manage their land in a way that will slow the rate of erosion. So Atlantic Avenue, they're, they're a great example of how dune plantings can really make a difference in slowing the rate of erosion, because the dune grasses have really large root systems that'll help hold the land in place. And we'll have, you know, recommended species and stuff like that in the plan.
So Elephant Rock Beach Club, that leases the land from the Westport Harbor Improvement Trust, has done a lot of work on the beach this past year, after the big storms we had that devastated their beach, just like everywhere else. And they have planted dune grass all over. They've made, they've made the dunes more resilient, I think. And I think they've done an amazing job, because they've never done anything before.
Yeah. We were just there on Sunday.
Right?
Doing, yeah, we went, we went, there was a public event that we had hosted, doing sightwalks at each of the three beaches, yeah. And that was one that, that we had went to, and we saw the, the dune grasses that they had planted, as well as there are a couple piping plover nests out there right now.
Mr. Chair, I, I think the report done by the Buzzards Bay Coalition with help from the Rathman Family Foundation here in Westport on the causeway had some interesting findings. If I recollect, one of the questions that came up here last week was, what do you think about beach renourishment? And the scientists involved in that study, which are some of the same folks doing our study, so you gotta think they're talking to each other, said beach renourishment is a practical way of dealing with this problem. You just have to realize that it is something that's an ongoing program. You can't do it once. And as, as the Buzzards Bay studies show, you get these circulation patterns, which are set up not by the causeway, but by the island, that are gonna drag sand off the beach and put it in, among other places, to the entrance to the harbor. And then the federal government's gonna have to dredge and take the sand out of the entrance, and perhaps not put it in the water, perhaps use that sand that came from the beach back on the beach. You could also, I would think, foresee that, you know, the sign out on 195 doesn't even say Westport, it says Horse Neck Beach, right? We don't exist. People come to Westport for the beaches, and they stay in hotels, VRVOs, wherever they stay, to go to the beach. So if you, if you levy an increase in a hotel tax for residents that is earmarked to something like re-nourishing the beaches that you're coming to see, it doesn't, it pays for it, or pays for part of it, who knows, without putting the burden on, you know, full-time residents. So I, I think there are ways to, to do this if this is an issue. And, and as you said earlier, Mr. Chair, all of this is connected. So many of these public meetings, so many of these grants that we've gotten, you know, have tremendous overlap with what we're looking at. And I think out of that's gonna come some really good recommendations.
What's whole group is currently modeling what will happen in different, various storm events with beach nourishment, with, with sand, and with cobble. So those results are still forthcoming, but those will be, should be available soon to show what kind of impact it may or may not have to fortify the beaches in various beach nourishment scenarios.
The other thing that I found interesting in that study is that our marshes, or, I think I've known this, but our marshes are not accreting enough to keep up with sea level, and they are drowning. And I think CZM and DEP have come up with new regulations for permitting trials on ways to augment the top of marshes. It may come too late, but then you need a source of dredge material that's suitable for the marshes.
Well, that cloud of Sahara sand that's headed to the United States may, may get all the way up to Westport and just dump all, a lot of bunch of nice sand right on the marshes.
Huh, I didn't know it was coming.
Yeah.
Last time I was in Italy, it was coming to Italy.
It's headed right now to Florida, Georgia, Mississippi, and Alabama, but maybe it'll get north.
Okay. Next.
We have a $50,000 award from the SNAP Network, and this was something that we kind of just stumbled upon through SERPD to develop a stormwater management plan in Westport. So it's only $50,000, so we had to select a sub watershed in town. The watershed that we had selected, I will, I have a map of it here, is watershed, or sub watershed three. This is, has the bread and cheese broken in it, has the headwaters in the Westport River, has Westport's Environmental Justice Community, as well as a lot of neighborhoods that don't have any sort of stormwater management system. So it's best candidate for this type of project. And what it'll do is it'll prioritize areas of need and, of protection and restoration as it applies to stormwater runoff. So this is something that I had applied for the SNAP Networks, like their community assistance. They helped with a small project. And then after meeting with, they, they had scheduled a call with me and some folks from SERPD, and I had mentioned that I had, submitted a, a pre-application to the MVP for a stormwater management plan. And I, I didn't end up applying for that this year, because they said, "Well, we can help you out with, you know, the initial inputs of a stormwater management plan." Sarah Singh was the one who kind of made the connect between, Sarah Singh at, at SERPD, she's one of their, one of their employees in the Environmental Division, made the connection between us and, and the SNAP Network to get this going, so we're grateful for that. But, yeah, we just put, we just put this out to an RFP. I think it's something that SERPD and the SNAP Network are going to be managing, so I'm grateful for that, because I've got a lot of different grant stuff going on. But, yeah, it'll be interesting to see what they, what they come up with, and I think it'll be a good start for doing a town-wide stormwater management plan.
That watershed's a very good choice. It has, it's cut by the two major highways, and, matter of fact, three, including 177, but it, but it also sort of samples the diversity. You've got very rural areas in the, in the very north, and then the very dense areas along Route 3. So it's a, it's a chance to have different solutions for different contexts.
Yeah, I think it's a great one, because it's, it's one of our most problem ones, and it includes the Route 6 area.
Yeah.
Which the state is supposed to be working on a Route 6 plan, which incorporates more robust stormwater control.
And then we'll be able to share this analysis with them, and, yeah. All right. And then the one-stop application, I just submitted this yes, yesterday. This ended up being an $87,000 grant application to work with SERPD on drafting some village commercial districts. We had talked about this in the last meeting, focusing on areas like Adamsville, the head of Westport. And I also included, within the proposal, a district for marine uses, marine-dependent uses, so like the area around Trips Boatyard and some of the adjacent parcels over there.
Things that are the point.
Yeah, yeah. So grant applications are gonna be very competitive this year, so we'll see how it shakes out. But, yeah, I was happy to get that done. And then, an update on our online permitting. I have anticipated schedule for this, so planning should go, we're anticipated to go live this month. And then CONCOM is July 7th, the ZBA is July 14th. And then maybe the, the Clerk's Office, I don't know if they're interested in, in using some of the services, they're supposed to meet with them tomorrow to determine if, if they're interested in that. They're already using City Hall systems for a lot of different applications, so they don't want to change over systems right now, when people are getting used to City Hall systems and, you know, just causing some confusion, so. But I, yeah, we should be, be done with the transition to online permitting by the end of summer.
Good. That would be super.
Yeah.
It's only 20 years late. Not your fault. Assistant Planner's report?
So at the last meeting, we kind of talked about some of the solar follow-ups, and you guys had more specific questions for me to look into. So I handed out a map that I made to everybody. This was just simply made in our mapping database, just to outline all of the parcels that are solar developments in town. And the questions that I was asked to look into are, how many megawatts have been approved in town? How, the total acreage of woodlands cleared, the total parcel acreage used, total megawatts used in town, and the total megawatts used in town that are attributed to residential consumer solar. So I was able to answer the first three. In terms of woodlands cleared, we have 158.6 acres, parcels is 786.99 acres, with 69.42 megawatts approved in town. In terms of residential consumer solar, I haven't, I just haven't had a chance to connect with the building department, and things have been a little up and down this week. And I do have a friend at the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources who's gonna connect me. I've called their renewables department twice for some of that total megawatts used, consumed by Westport data, which I believe they do have and are gonna be able to help me with, I just haven't been able to connect with them. I've reached out a couple times. So hopefully there'll be something more to say later, but I hope this rudimentary map, you know...
This is really good.
So is this ones that are installed already, or is this approved?
Approved. Some are still in construction, like two are still in construction.
But you haven't included the ones that were approved that have decided not to do.
I took out the withdrawn, there's one withdrawn and one that was denied. So those have not been included in this map. Yep.
And the parcel acres?
Yeah. 786 total, that's the total acreage of, just the whole parcel. So basically the parcel, I just added up those things. I think something that's maybe more helpful is maybe getting a percentage, instead of just flat numbers, so we kind of know how much space is being used. We have that woodlands and parcel data. Once I get that megawatt data, I feel like I can play with it to create some kind of...
And also, is there some, some location that would tell you how many acres of woodland we have?
Remaining. Yeah, and that can be used in a percentage, yep. So woodlands remaining.
I think Joseph Engelstein, who was in our Agricultural Subcommittee of Climate Resilience, and did about a 40 or 50-page graphic report on ag, had a whole bunch of maps around different types of forest, different types of soil and conditions. And I don't know whether in, in providing all those maps, you could go the step to say, how many acres of forest do we have? But I know he did a lot of work on that.
So the, the one that's at the Fall River Roddy Dunn Club?
Yeah.
That seems to take over the whole parcel. Is this just the woodlands cleared? Is this the parcel? Is this just the woodlands cleared? Is this the parcel that it's on?
I should, I should have titled this map better. These are just parcels that are attributed to solar developments. These are the parcels outlined. It's, it's not the woodlands. I can get a map for you like that, too. I can draw that.
So the yellow is the seven hundred and eighty six acres?
Yes.
Not the one fifty eight?
Yes, sir. Yep. Does that look accurate to everybody? Okay.
It's pretty interesting distribution around Westport. It's not all located in one place. It's all in a place.
I know, I noticed that, yeah. With a lot more towards that north Fall River edge, those are like the biggest ones. But I'd have, I haven't site visited the Rodding Gun Club one, so I don't. I'm, I.
You probably go on a near map and let's see what it looks like from an area.
So I'm sorry, I think I might have missed it. So let's get woodlands remaining. And John, I think you just poked me about one more figure.
Yeah, I'd asked before about how many, how much electricity is consumed by businesses and households in Westport. You know, is it more than sixty nine megawatts, less than sixty nine?
There's two different electric companies, you know.
Yes.
So it's EverSource and National Grid. And National Grid does some of the Western.
Okay.
Like the harbor.
Okay.
And I think EverSource is probably one across the town.
And you had said you were phoning up a D O E P R to see if they had that information.
Which I, I believe they should because my friend who works there, she's like, we should have it. I don't know anyone on renewables, so, yeah.
If that be, if that becomes complicated and difficult, you know, one thing you might do, I think, look at average residential consumption. I mean, I think that's sort of published, houses use X, you know. And, and we know how many dwelling units we have in the town. So the idea of, you know, to, to get to, to get to the answer is is it, is it more than, is it more than sixty nine or less than sixty nine? I think that's a, a probably easy way to do that.
You got some are residents, I mean, some of the households are only used two or three months of the year.
Yep.
So the electrical consumption would be quite different.
No, I think this is great. I think this is helpful.
Really helpful.
Yeah, a start.
You gotta send a copy of this map to the people we just sent that letter to.
Oh, yeah.
The site in.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I wish I had the better mapping software, but.
You could say that we know how to do this, right?
This is our experience. What's yours?
Right, right. Thank you for the conversation. I have, you know, some points to follow up. So he posted, you know, next meeting, I'll have something else to share. Moving on to the legal status of Mellow's Way, I'm going to read off the memo that I wrote for this. So the planning department and the planning board should note that on May twenty second, twenty twenty five, virtual meeting between the town administrator, Jim Hartnett, town councils, Robenstein and Roger Smirge, and building inspector Ralph Susan and myself was held to discuss the legal status of Mellow's Way in town. The status was called into question as purchasers are considering the land for subdivision development, which requires frontage. So per town bylaws, Mellow's Way would have to be upgraded to town roadway specs or given to, and given to the town, pardon, or would have had to exist before the implementation of the subdivision control law in nineteen seventy one to provide legal frontage. And to continue, M G L Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section six, does have this grandfathering provision for nonconforming lots, a special protection for single use lots that existed pre-zoning. So for these lots, the minimum area is five thousand square feet, the minimum frontage is fifty. The lot must have been shown on a plan described in a deed recorded before the effective date of local zoning and must not be held in common ownership with any adjoining land at the time of recording. So these lots are permitted for single or two family residential use only. So if an argument is to be made that Mellow's Way was in existence pre-subdivision control law, that burden of proof is on the applicant and the applicant's counsel, not the town. This is kind of what the, the tension in question, who, who get this giving advice of the legal status. So it is kind of in a gray area. Town council advises that the town and town staff should not give advisory opinions to applicants. Any opinion should be given through the official vectors of the application process. So if an argument is to be made that Mellow's Way is in existence pre-subdivision control law, it first needs to come before the planning board for support before submitting a full permit application to the building department. So the review shall not be expanded upon as the development progresses. Any changes or modifications will require review before the board. So regarding this applicant, Ralph already sent a letter in June twenty twenty three, which kind of detailed exactly the process that I described here. And so this letter was resent to the applicant in May twenty five. This is kind of more of a building conversation that planning was looked into because of our, you know, it's, it's all tied, it's interconnected. So I wanted to share that memo. Sorry for reading out the whole thing, but basically, yeah, people are thinking of purchasing Mellow's Way. This legal status is always up in question. So town council has now, you know, officially stated again, we can't give any advisory opinions and any kind of burden of proof is on the applicant. So that's a quick update.
They have to prove that it is what they say.
They have to prove it, yeah. And I think it's getting a little mixed up with some applicants kind of maybe expecting that burden of proof on, on staff. So we just had to have a meeting to figure it out.
It could be an ancient way, which is, you know, they have to prove that it's, it was on the radar of the town.
Right. Pre.
In ancient times.
Yeah.
And some of these things are and some of them aren't. And it's really hard to determine without getting an expert to make their case.
There needs to be a, that's a, that's a fact question. You need a lot of evidence.
And the, the question is, okay, it's an ancient way, if it is, and it's narrow, then we may require that it be upgraded to subdivision standards or at least a passable way for safety. But they may not have the room to do that.
Right.
And that's up to them, not up to us.
So, yeah, this might become before us in a meeting, the following meeting, so heads up, I guess. And then my last, go ahead.
I'm trying to recall, but I think we, when, when we had LeBlanc's project up there, we, we looked at that pretty carefully. And I think, I don't recall, but I think the, the road was only, layout was only thirty feet wide or something like that.
Yeah, it's very, it's a variable, but it's
Right.
The, the, the width of the layout is consistently under forty feet.
And this wall's on at least one side, right? Partially?
I, I know there's some wetlands in there. I don't know about stone walls.
It goes through, I think.
Yeah, it does. It does go through some wetlands.
Is it, is a, a property on the west side that has a lot of commercial buildings and trailers and stuff back in there? And it's, it's all along the road. It's very wet.
So it's, and that's why the previous applicant was trying to get access through his former sub, former project, which he didn't have the right to do.
Yep.
So it's up to them to provide access if they want to use the lot. But I mean, it's, it's not for the faint of heart, I would say. So this has nothing to do with the previous thing about getting the balance.
Right, separate, yeah.
Because he doesn't own that.
Yeah.
No, he doesn't own it. We get a lot of interest from it because it's all uplands, but the, the problem is access.
Balloon access. Okay, next.
Yeah, just a small update today. My Glenn, I actually attended a coastal relocation workshop in Matapan at the Nature Conservancy, Mass Autumn Home. Really nice to be part of this network. It's more about meeting and engaging with other folks. So Justine Rooney, who works on the Berry Beach Management Plan, was there and Rebecca Haney. So we had our squad again together from Sunday. So we had a good time, just kind of sharing some ice ricos, sharing some stories, listening. A lot of the plenary sessions were kind of focused on proactive planning is also a form of hope. And just, they actually talked about the Resilient Coast Draft Plan as well. She went through and kind of did a bit of a deeper dive in the engagement process. All that to say is, you know, I'm happy to be part of this. I didn't feel like I walked away with a wealth of knowledge, particularly from this one. I think this was more about getting a space together, getting the people together and establishing that network. So we're going to continue on that and hopefully, you know, that'll be relevant to some of our projects here in town, too.
So what is, it says coastal relocation workshop.
Yeah.
Tell me about coastal relocation. Is that the same?
Managed retreat, spatial expansion. There are many different terms flying around. They actually, they called it the coastal relocation workshop, but they, they framed it with managed retreat. That's kind of the most general term, but I think sometimes it has like certain connotations, which is why spatial expansion I've heard used, which is maybe more neutral, but also not exactly capturing what's happening.
Do they have any money for us?
No. That's, that was a lot of, that was a common refrain was, well, every coastal community is going through these same pains of having to have conversations about managed retreat or, you know, whatever you want to call it. And we need money. We, we, you know, there are other communities where they have full time residential communities that are really much more at risk than what we deal with here. And they're in the same position, except they have folks who are living in these places full time. And what do you do, you know?
If you look at Plum Island, Ipswich, Newburyport, and then also, you know, on the subshore, Marshfield, Situate, Amrock Beach.
Yeah, Tucker.
Right.
When your front yard drops into the ocean,
Right.
you get people's attention, you know. So you're already saying, well, this isn't happening when your front yard just.
Some folks will lose like forty feet in a storm.
Your neighbor's house goes in.
And sometimes like in Chatham, all of a sudden, instead of having a bay view, you have an ocean view. The barrier island just goes away. Okay, discussion items?
Yeah, so I brought this up last year. We had talked about a couple of different subdivision or amendments to the subdivision by law. We didn't get around to addressing it last year, but I'd like to address it this year as well as some other zoning by law amendments that we did not get around to last year. And I think we should start preparing, it's hard to, I mean, we just had town meeting, but we have to stay on top of it so there's not a rush getting zoning amendments out the door. So with the towns or with the, the subdivision amendments that are, we had discussed considering, the first one I'll start with is the town's roadway specifications. So there are a couple of things that need to be tightened up in the, in the bylaw. There are some inconsistencies with tables and figures. We need some precise definitions for roadway types. And more generally, can we get to a better product in our subdivision regs? That's also a little bit less or has less of an impact, which would be consistent with the fact that we have a low impact development by law. So with our roadways, it's important to, that we're not having roads that are, are designed to be too wide. It encourages speeding through, through neighborhoods. You know, we've all been on a street that's, you know, has a lot of folks speeding and it's not a great pedestrian experience. Increases more impervious surfacing, which increases runoff. The impervious surfacing also increases the, the heat of that runoff, which is bad for water quality as well. If the town, it takes over those roads, the wider road increases maintenance costs. And wider streets, if they're encouraged slower speeds, there's less risk of injury in the event of a collision. So some general considerations that I, I think we should keep in mind when we're talking about these subdivision regulations, particularly for pedestrians. We need to have, and we did this last year, or I think it was two years ago, to require sidewalks and subdivisions with five or more lots. I think we could also consider requiring street trees and new subdivisions so that it can reduce the temperatures for pedestrians. It also provides some traffic calming mechanism to it. And we could have wider sidewalks to better accommodate two way travels, particularly for folks who have mobility impairments. And then always in, require the buffer between sidewalks and the roadways and widen that so pedestrians are separated a little bit further from the travel lanes. So you all know what street trees are, but they're the trees that are right adjacent to the road, just planted in a strip of land between sidewalk and the road. I have some recommended parameters for street trees. So in a subdivision, it should only really be required in situations where sidewalks are also being required. So with five or more lots, currently with our, with the town's frontage requirements, it's a hundred and fifty feet. So you could accommodate, easily accommodate two street trees in that development at seventy five foot increments. Gives them a lot of adequate space to grow, but also to provide some, some shade in the development. And then we could require a two year surety in order to ensure that the street tree establishes. And we would, I would recommend that there are no monocultures permitted in the development. So we don't want just entirely one species of tree in the development and to use native plant species. And then some technical considerations for our, for the, for the road layout. We could reduce the travel lane from eleven feet to ten feet. That gives us the ability within a forty foot road layout to increase the sidewalk from four feet to five feet to just get a little bit of that extra width. And, and that's for residential streets. For collector streets, I would recommend reducing the travel lane from fifteen feet to twelve feet, increase sidewalk width from four to five. And then you can, with the reduction of the travel lane width, you can pick up an extra two feet in the grass shoulder. We should have two different cross sections for residential and collector streets. Right now, we have residential and collector streets in one cross section. And I just think from a readability pers, readability standpoint, it's better just to have two cross sections. And then include in, in a note, a footnote that if street trees are required, or where sidewalks are required, street trees are required.
So if we, if we go back to the, if we have the collector streets, I don't think we have many that we've paid attention to, collector streets. But if we have a twelve foot wide travel lane that's twenty four feet plus five feet and five feet, that's thirty four feet. And then a grass shoulder, eight feet before the sidewalk?
Yes.
Between the sidewalk.
Yep.
So that's another sixteen feet. So go way up to fifty feet?
You're reducing the, the travel lane, yeah, yeah. The, the, the width of a collector street is fifty feet wide. That's the, the layout.
And that would fit all that in twelve feet, five feet, and eight feet.
Because you're taking three feet away from the travel lanes and then you're adding three feet to total for the sidewalk and grass shoulder.
So the travel lane, a street has two travel lanes, right? So that means the street is going to be twenty four feet wide.
Right. Right.
And the reduction is six feet in the travel, in the two travel lanes.
Total, yeah.
Total.
And then it's shifted to the sidewalk and buffer strip.
Hey, you're not requiring the buffer strip on a residential street?
Um, it is, it is required. It's just not, I'm not saying, I'm proposing to change the width of it. I think the width is four feet in the current cross-section. But on a residential street, you're only, you have ten feet less.
Right, it's a forty-foot right away, right? So do, is it clear to us and to applicants which are collector streets or which are residential streets?
Well, that's another thing to talk about is definitions. So here, there's the, the two cross-sections are combined. I just think they should be separated out. And there are some specifications in this table and the subdivision by law that aren't consistent. Um, for example, under residential streets for the minimum right-of-way width, it says fifty feet. That's inconsistent with what's required in the cross-sections as well as how the planning board has been
Right.
uh, requiring residential street development, which we've always been going with forty feet. So just to tighten some, some things up like that. The roadway definitions, I think there needs to be some improvement there. Um, I think we, for a residential street, the definition could be a street that conveys traffic to a collector street that supports slow speeds, twenty-five miles per hour or less, and primarily serves residential land uses. Um, the collector street definition would be a street that is being used or will be used to collect traffic from residential streets or will convey traffic to another collector street or arterial. And then arterial is a limited access or high-speed thoroughfare that conveys traffic from collector streets to highways or between municipalities. There wasn't a definition for arterial in the subdivision by law. I know we don't see these types of developments very often, but just in the event that there is some, you know, that we have some sort of.
Eighty-eight would be an arterial?
Eighty-eight would be an arterial.
One-seventy-seven.
Would be an arterial.
Six.
Yeah.
And a collector street would be?
Maygrove.
Maygrove?
Mm-hmm.
And?
Sodom.
Sodom? River Road?
Barnum.
That's a good question. But this is, this really only applies to new streets that are being, being proposed, yeah. There are probably other, other streets around town that just due to the way things have developed over time, they're not going to fit these classifications.
So Maygrove, that's a, that's a big subdivision, lots of houses. Are those residential or is that a collector?
Metabook would be residential, predominantly residential.
Those are residential streets, yeah. They directly serve homes.
Okay, I think that's good.
All right, and then some of these should be, on this slide should be a little bit.
Does that have to be in the, in a, uh, is this, are those regulations for streets or is that part of our bylaw?
Those are the definitions of particular types of streets in the, in the subdivision by law.
Right, but the, the dimensions for those regulations or bylaw?
Those are in the bylaw, yeah. The dimensions are in the bylaw, yeah.
In the rural residential, you mentioned that somewhere. That's a, that's a town bylaw.
The rural residential lane?
I thought so.
Restr- well, the, no, rural residential lane is in the subdivision by law.
The subdivision regulations and the rules regulations.
The reserve strip issue is something that came up with the subdivision proposal. Um, we just, I thought we need to have a definition of it in the bylaw. I forget how I formatted this. I haven't looked at this in a minute. Oh, okay. So the, the, the first bullet is the, is an excerpt from the subdivision by law. And underneath it is a suggestion of a definition. So to define reserve strip as a narrow strip of land usually located at the edge of a subdivision that effectively restricts access to the proposed subdivision's road layout. And then this also came up in another subdivision, um, within the last couple of years. We didn't define what the distance is, should be between a subdivision street and the perimeter boundary. Um, we ended up settling, I think, on twenty feet with that particular subdivision, which, I mean, this can be completely at the board's discretion. You can waive it, but I think it is good to have a standard um, in place. So twenty feet, um, is, is what I have proposed up here. And then just having an exemption, um, that recognizes that there are some pretty oddly shaped parcels in, in Westport that, um, just due to the nature of those parcels, you're, if you're bringing in a road, you're going to abut up against the side of, um, another parcel. And so as to not make this unnecessarily burdensome and restrictive, um, for a proposer. So to have, add an item number three underneath, um, the first two in the subdivision by law outlining where you can have a perimeter boundary, just noting that if the layouts of the subject parcel and adjacent parcels prior to the proposal of the subdivision present narrowness, that necessitate street siting along the perimeter. And then saying that siting along the perimeter must be limited to the greatest extent possible um, as necessitated by the lot layouts.
Can we make some comments or did we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, this is just a discussion.
Oh, yeah. Well, my first comment is, I think you got some great recommendations here. I really like them. Um, I mean, the, the idea of the, the, uh, having a buffer script between the actual road and the sidewalk is an excellent idea. And then having a surety to ensure that the trees that get planted there actually take. And as we, I've driven by many places, as I'm sure you have, seen these dead trees lining the, uh, lining sidewalks. But uh, the question I was going to ask was just to go back to that, uh, width of the travel way. If we reduce it down to twelve feet, does, now does that assume that there's parking along each side of the travel or along, you know, each side of the roadway?
It does.
That impinges on the travel way, the twelve feet?
It does not assume parking on the street. But you can, you can accommodate parking on a, on a residential street. It would just narrow it down such that you'd only have one, you don't, you couldn't accommodate two-way traffic like you would on, kind of like on a city street where one person has to pull off to the side.
So you don't have, you only have parking on one side of the street?
I suppose you could have it on either side of, of the street. Um, although I don't think we see a lot of street parking in, in Westport, but.
Well, the travel way is, is twelve feet. If we're limiting to twelve feet wide, um, so I'm asking, does that, if you had parking there?
Mm-hmm.
Now you've got the actual width available for a car to pass. Just narrow it down to like six feet or seven feet, right? Cause the car is five feet wide or something, six feet?
Right. So you'd have to, like I said, you'd, one motorist would have to wait for the other, you know, an oncoming motorist to get around that vehicle.
Yeah.
Or you'd have to go slow.
And you've got, uh, bicycles or bike, um, cyclists, I should call them, on the, on that road. They're not going to be on the sidewalks. I mean, that, that creates another danger. So they tend to be in the travel way.
It does slow down the traffic too, though.
Well, yeah.
I like the twenty-eight football bros. That's, that's, you know, twenty-six, twenty-eight, back and burn, back and burn.
They say the smallest you can go is actually seven feet for a travel lane, so.
Well, I think the idea is these regulations, I'm just thinking about some of the practical applications and whether we're going to run into some safety issues.
Well, I think some of our main roads, like River Road is only twenty feet wide in some places. I don't think.
The paved surface.
Paved surface, yeah. The travel, I mean, I mean, it's ten feet.
Yeah, well, I mean, I commented that last year when the, they were repaving the parking lots at, um.
Horse Neck.
Horse Neck Beach, right? And they, and all those large paving trucks and the, the trucks carrying all the, the, the aggregate were coming down Horse Neck Road because they, they could cross Hicks Bridge, but apparently the, what is it called? The La France Bridge or whatever it's called, the Route eighty-eight bridge.
Yep.
Isn't, wasn't adequate to support the load of those trucks.
Really?
And that's why, yeah, we talked about that. And somebody said, oh, it's because.
The Fontaine Bridge.
Fontaine Bridge, yeah. Uh, maybe it's the drawbridge part of it and that can't support those, uh, large loads. So these trucks came down eighty-eight, turned off on Hicks Bridge Road, crossed that old, well, it's been rebuilt, Hicks Bridge, and then came down Horse Neck Road. And I watched those things trying to pass. And you know, we have a lot of bicyclists and joggers and walkers and dog walkers. And whoa, it was, it was pretty hair-raising to see those trucks coming and then people trying to get out, oncoming traffic trying to get out of their way while they came out into the, you know, the lane to avoid the people in the street.
So how, how the, how the, the, the big trucks for silver vans, access silver vans, do they come down?
They don't, they don't come in loaded like that. Those trucks are, those trucks run a hundred thousand. Silver vans probably have sixty-eight thousand.
Yeah, but do they go over the Fontaine Bridge?
Some of them do.
Mr. General. I, I am generally in favor of the, of this and I, uh, and I think the major goals that you've explained to Michael are, uh, one, to improve safety, i.e. more speed equals more danger. So we slow people down, it's safer. So one goal is safety. And the other goal, as I see it of all of these, is to shift the balance from the car to the pedestrian and, and cyclists. Uh, now, I think, um, the next, you know, I don't even care what it says right now because it's going to go through public hearing. We're going to get all kinds of public comment. We're going to make changes based on the public comment. So if the final result looks like this, fantastic, I'll be shocked. But, you know, it, in the, in the public comment, will get modified.
Sure.
I think that, and it will be interesting to see, uh, if people agree with our goals about safety and shifting the balance from cars to pedestrians and bicyclists, whether they say, as Mark alluded to, that, wait a minute, these are not achieving your goals because you're crowding the street and making it more dangerous for a pedestrian or a bicycle. So that's why I think, you know, the public, uh, engagement part of this is going to be useful is, is to tease that out, whether, if you support our goals of safety and, and tipping the balance, whether you think this does it or whether it has an opposite effect. I think it'll be really interesting to get people's views on that. But I, I, I think, uh, starting now is a good idea. I think the other message it gives, uh, the people that we ask to come to public engagement is zoning documents, subdivisions are living documents. We always want to be in a position of asking ourselves, do they work best for Westport? Do they work best for, uh, you know, protecting the character of Westport, improving safety, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? But if people get used to the fact that we're going to come at them every year with tweaks to zoning laws, then they'll get the message, hey, this is dynamic. It changes and it, it changes based on public opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's a very good message to have.
Yeah, and I agree with John and it's a reflection of the, the changing, uh, the change in our town. I mean, the growth of the town and so we have to adapt our regulations.
So the last two is, uh, just to tighten up that, um, we allow more than one dwelling per lot and this is a restriction in the subdivision by law. Obviously, it's not being applied because we allow duplexes, we allow accessory dwelling units. I think we can just strike this from the, the subdivision by law. And then regarding storm drainage, there's a provision that says neighboring properties shall not be used in the plan. And I think we need to clarify neighboring properties shall not be used in, uh, or shall not be used for stormwater infrastructure. Because we've had public comments saying, well, water from this property is going to drain, you know. There was, I guess, the specific issue I'm thinking about where there was a, a neighbor saying that the stormwater plan did incorporate their property into their stormwater plan, but it was reducing the overall level of stormwater that was being discharged to their property. So, and it was being designed to use the same, um, stormwater flows as the current property. Um, it's, we're not going to have a regulation that says a hundred percent of stormwater has to be retained on one site. So just to clarify that unless you're getting an easement from an adjacent property to use that property for the stormwater management system, um, then you would comply with this provision of the reg- of the subdivision by law.
I think that's, uh, good. And we certainly had that one development that points that, that out. As long as we say just what you said, which is, there is no expectation that any development will contain a hundred percent of its, you know, cause I don't think we can write rules that tell water what to do.
Yeah, but that, but you're, but that, unless a recordable easement, I don't understand how this all works. Because if a neighbor doesn't want the project and traditionally, or in, in history, the water has traveled over the neighbor's property.
Mm-hmm.
And now part of the stormwater plan is going to reduce that by, by twenty percent. But it's still going to go there.
Right.
Unless that neighbor gave an easement. And it, the neighbor's not going to give an easement because he doesn't want the, the project.
Yeah.
So how do you work that?
So this is saying that if the stormwater management system uses an adjacent property, you need to secure an easement from them.
But what do you mean?
Well, it's not saying that, you know, if water ran from this lot to that lot, the goal is to reduce that by twenty percent by whatever you're doing, not to eliminate it.
Right.
So I think what you've said is, this is not saying you have to contain all stormwater on your lot. It says if you're going to use a neighbor's lot for, you know, retention basins or whatever you're going to use it for.
Is it just for the infrastructure you're talking about?
That's what it says.
Yeah, for, yeah.
But, I mean, I would think if the water always went in that direction, you want to keep your, your infrastructure on your lot and easements to maintain whatever happens on the other lot where the water always was. It's not like you're going to, I'm going to put the retention pond over the, on the other guy's property.
Right.
The water always went there, so.
Right, exactly.
We don't need an easement to build ditches or anything like that, we just need the easement to maintain.
Yeah.
Or if they wanna say, hey, it'd be better if you move it over to the side, and we'll create a swale, or something like that.
Yeah.
Solve the problem for them.
Yeah.
So is there, uh, do you need a motion to set a public hearing date? That's what's on the agenda? What do you wanna do?
I think we should talk about a public hearing date, but Mark has something he wants to talk about for, um, the, I told you I was gonna put you on the spot, um, for having a minimum length for rural residential lanes.
Right, right, yeah, no, I brought this up before, um, there were a couple of subdivision proposals that we had last year and the year before, um, where they, uh, let's see, there was Rosemary's Way, which is right off River Road. They, they used a rural classified as a rural residential lane. And as you know, our bylaw says there's a maximum length for rural residential lanes of twelve hundred feet. But there's no, and I wonder, I question whether there should not be a, a minimum length, because these things, this, this Rosemary's Lane was.
This was a non, a non-existing road.
It's like a little, it's a hundred feet deep, I mean, it's, or, or less. And, uh, another one that was, came up the year before, Rose, Rosewood Lane off of Gifford Road. And again, it's like ninety feet deep, I mean, that's thirty yards, it's just.
How can you consider that a road?
Yeah, barely a forward pass, and, so, uh, I just thought, should, should there not be, should we not consider a, uh, adding a minimum length as well as having their maximum? And what would that be? What is, you know, if you're gonna make a road or a lane, what do you think is an appropriate length to really consider your lane?
The average golfer's five iron, so?
That means, that means if it's me, all the roads are going into the woods.
That's a very interesting point, because I, I remember those two cases, and these are really just stretching the regulations to give frontage to a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and that's what it was, Rosemary's Way, but that was done.
Right.
Fifteen years ago.
Yes, it was. That was fixing a problem.
It was fixing a problem, because they had multiple houses on the same lot, and. Which.
Probably wouldn't matter now.
Wouldn't matter now, right. Well, it, it still would. They, they still have a problem on that lot, because they had two houses on that lot. They have a small house and a big house, but the small house is like nineteen hundred feet, it's not, it's not nine hundred feet.
But, I mean, Bob's point is that, uh, and I agree, is that there are, this one example, but there are other, there are other, um, provisions, I guess, of our, of our bylaws, which are being, you know, we've seen how tortured they can become, and they, but they meet our requirements. And, uh, we, I don't know if we can tease them out and get some more kind of sensible-looking subdivisions, but, uh, this was just one example of what, of something I thought could be an easy, easy fix.
Yeah, so, can you come up with a suggestion?
We can look into it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Just a quick Google, Dartmouth, it looks like Dartmouth has some kind of minimum taper length of one hundred feet. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll look into it and see what other municipalities do.
No, we, we, we see that over and over again, which, the, the, we, we don't see design solutions, we see geometry solutions. You know, okay, it, it says this, can I, can I fit something that, that meets that, you know? Whether or not it, it, it's a, a good piece of design, or I think it's just, you know, we're, we're constantly trying to, you know, develop a, you know, someone who's, you know, if there isn't a community that's really interested in good design, but just trying to maximize lots, or, you know, figure out, you know, how to, how to be at the edge of the compliance with the rules. You know, we, we can say, no, if you're gonna use a subdivision control bar, it has to be a real street. You know, and, and it may be a, a small street, but it has to be, a, a, at the end of the day, it has to look like a, a street.
And you should build it.
Yeah.
It isn't just a paper street.
Right.
Right.
So.
To spec. Yeah.
Right, so.
Mr. Chair, you wanna add a motion?
Well, I don't know if we need a motion for this, but.
Yeah, we don't have to, we don't need a motion for it, but.
This is gonna be an ongoing thing.
So we'll just send it out for a public hearing?
But sometime this summer, we don't have to pick a particular date, but just sometime this summer, that's.
But I, I think we could get more things together before we have a public hearing.
For, you wanna do subdivision and zoning, or just subdivision? Well, I guess zoning would be too, too far out from town meeting, so just subdivision. Are there other items that you're, you're thinking about?
Yeah.
So what I'd like to figure out is how, how we can enable starter housing. And I think we need to think outside the box in terms of how we could accomplish that. So I think the, the zoning in Westport morphed over the years from twenty thousand square feet to forty thousand square feet to sixty thousand square feet. The sixty, I think, was a reaction to a whole bunch of developments going in, like, uh, Forest Park, you know, and Meadow Brook. And thinking that, oh my God, this is getting out of control, we gotta slow it down. And part of the forty thousand was a reaction to DEP's requirement for ten thousand square feet per bedroom in a lot. And is there a way to zone an area that would be good for modest two-bedroom houses? And, uh, make that, uh, a bite right in some areas? And so do twenty thousand square feet lots? Or is there a way to work with DEP to say, hey, let, let's cut down the restrictions on people sharing a well, or sharing a septic system? So that you could have, uh, more dense development that isn't apartments and stuff like that, that people don't really want around here. There could be, um, you know, eight houses could share a well, or eight houses could share a septic system. Without having to have, uh, all the crazy metrics of a public water supply, or the big public water supply with a big area that you, you can't do anything with, um, there's gotta be a way that the, the, the state, um, government is pushing, pushing, pushing for more housing? Well, let's, let's call it. Say, okay, then allow us to do it somehow. Instead of just screaming that you've gotta allow all this, uh, all this housing that isn't appropriate for what we have. We don't have the infrastructure.
Right.
For, and, you know, even if we do designate three hundred acres at density of fifteen per, per unit, if we don't have water and sewer, it's, it's, you're just making a point, and you're not gonna ever get anything.
Right.
And so let's try to design something that would make sense, uh, and I'm sure there are other places around the country that are doing this. Uh, that you could have starter homes, uh, there, you know, every developer around here wants to big, uh, build a, uh, four-bedroom colonial on a sixty thousand square foot lot. You cut all the trees down and pop the house up out of the ground, and so they don't get water in the basement, and it's just insane. It isn't good development. And take the pressure off, off of the A and Rs, I mean, because that's gonna kill us eventually. So.
I think we can accomplish some of that through, through the zoning bylaw. Not through the, the subdivision.
Yeah.
Regulations.
It has to be through the zoning.
Yeah, so, yeah, I, and we've talked about, I think, there's a couple meetings ago where we talked about having, like, um, trying to, to get a handle on some of the, uh, so, further incentivize the open space residential development and do some of the things that, that you're referring to, Jim. And I think we should have that on the, the docket for later on this fall, because we can only have a public hearing for town meeting so far out from town meeting day. But for the subdivision stuff, was there anything else that you wanted to add to the?
So you're, you're splitting off zoning from subdivision regulations?
Right, yeah, because we can have a public hearing for subdivision outside of town meeting.
Even though that goes into our zoning bylaw?
Well, the subdivision bylaw relies on some of the assumptions of the zoning bylaw, for example, like lot sizes.
So we, we can.
All this stuff is rules and regulations.
Right, we can adopt our own rules and regulations at a public hearing. But we, the town meeting doesn't have to adopt our regulations.
Right.
Okay. That's what I thought I asked in the beginning, but I guess.
I misunderstood.
Nomenclature is not my forte, but I, I, I thought that we're talking about, uh, rules and regulations as opposed to zoning bylaws.
That's what we are, so.
But you're saying that this is listed in the zoning bylaw?
No, this is the, the subdivision rules and regulations. I apologize, I was using the wrong term, and other, uh, in other places, it would be a bylaw, but in Massachusetts, it's rules and regulations, so that was, that's my fault.
So if we're having trouble telling the difference, the average citizen is not going to know the difference between subdivision and zoning. They're gonna wanna talk about it all. However, we are constrained.
Right.
Uh, that zoning has to be within a window before town meeting.
Yep.
Uh, and subdivisions we could do tomorrow. So.
But we can talk about zoning in not a public hearing for a zoning bylaw, we can talk about it. What do you think about this zoning idea? What do you think about this zoning idea? We can do that anytime.
Oh, we have, we can have that discussion at any public meeting.
So, uh, if there are ideas, I think there's an advantage to having the public engagement include both zoning and subdivision. Because for most people, I don't care what the difference is, just tell me what you're doing with roads and house lot size, and stuff like that. And as you said, uh, if we have a zoning, if we have a public hearing on subdivision and zoning ideas, and it's outside the window for town meeting, well, that's okay, we'll have another one inside the window. But I, I think there's some benefit to putting all these ideas in one public meeting. So you get people to take the time out of their evening to come here, they can comment on the whole thing instead of going through two extra sides.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah, we could, we could just have, like, a general discussion item, um, for the zoning amendments, and then have the public hearing afterward, or however we wanna structure it, but yeah, that works.
I mean, the, the, Westport's unusual in a lot of ways in which we have, we have two zoning categories.
Yeah.
It's, it's really very unusual to have a municipality that has only two zoning categories.
Yeah. We have three, but we got rid of it at the prior time, it was town meeting.
We used to have three.
But I think, to your point, Bob, and, and Jim, what you're, one of, I think, the subtext is, what you're saying is that the, the one-size-fits-all approach to zoning is not working anymore. And that we need to have a little bit of more of context built into the zoning based on, you know, a number of different factors, access to, to roads and, and services, and, um, your proximity to natural features, and, you know, what is considered, um.
And, 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 and just the character, should, should.
Right.
The business, the business, should the business district on Route Six look the same as it does in Adamsville?
Mm-hmm. Right.
And the answer to that is, no, it shouldn't. It would, it would change everything, you know? But that's the way the zoning is.
Right.
And, and.
What year did we adopt zoning?
Seventy-one.
Seventy-one.
No, sorry, that's subdivision.
Fifty-seven.
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 Yeah.
Fifty-seven.
So if we look at our neighbor, Dartmouth, they have, I'm just looking at it now, they have fourteen different zones.
Right, right.
They have, just on residential, they have four different residential zones. Single residence A, single residence B, C, and D, and, and general residence. They have village, village business district, they have limited business district. I mean, it may be far more complicated than what we're.
Double lot levy, too.
Than what we need, but the point is that, you know, they do try, they, they looked at the whole town and realized that there are different, you can have different uses and, and different densities in different parts of it.
Yeah, some, some parts of Dartmouth, you can't tell the difference between Dartmouth and Bedford. I mean, the neighborhoods come right together.
They have salt water, so, but it's.
Yeah, what you're saying is Tibbetson and Paul Ruben, yeah. So density sort of blend.
But we're, we're gonna try to get the one-stop application for the village commercial, right? So that's a step.
That's a, that's a, that's a very good step, because that has been in our master plan, and we've not been able to do anything above it. Especially because these little, like, like at the head, and, you know, you know, so you have this little commercial activity, but it's all sixty thousand square foot in residential ag, you know, it's.
Right, right.
It's not, it's not in the business district.
Right.
So keep on keeping on, I think that's.
We'll do that.
A good thing, and I, I would, I would, do you have any more of these subdivision things?
No, that's, that's it.
To work on?
That's it for the subdivision bylaw.
So are you ready to call a public hearing, or do you need to tweak the?
If we wanna talk about other zoning-related things, I think we'll need more time.
Okay.
To schedule a public hearing.
So what was the plan this time, when?
Maybe, maybe late summer, early fall, I think, or late summer would probably be good.
Okay. Okay. Uh, minutes.
Mr. Chair, um, I've looked at, uh, our agenda says minutes for April twenty-second and May twentieth. I see, uh, that the April twenty-second meetings are in our packet, I don't know if the May twentieth.
I don't think May twentieth made it.
So I've read the April twenty-second minutes, and again, uh, comprehensive, accurate, very well laid out. Although my computer's, is screwing up a little bit with some of the words, but I assume that won't be the case, and, uh, and when it prints out. Uh, so I would move approval of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five minutes in planning board.
Uh, I, I will second that, but I also had a, a comment about, just looking at it on the screen, things like solder. It somehow, it, it somehow doesn't read properly, moved, moved.
I think it's because the font.
I don't know what.
Isn't accepted in Adobe or something like that?
Yeah, that's what I was looking through, but I think when it prints out, however we score these. But that's the first time I've noticed the, uh, problem with the spacing between letters or the combining of letters. So you might think about, because it hasn't happened in the past. But the substance of the minutes is, I think, good.
So are you moving it?
Yeah, I second it, yes.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Want a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Do we have minutes of May 30th, 20th?
No.
Those didn't make it in the packet, I guess.
So I would like to just mention that I am going to try to go to that meeting tomorrow on the Fed Finance stuff. It was called on Monday in New Bedford. And in the morning, I'll be meeting with the Serpents Environmental Group, and they've invited the head of the DEP South Coast wastewater guy. And apparently, all of a sudden, they're anxious to talk with Serpents about the issues in the, the Buzzers Bay area, Buzzers Bay watershed, with regard to wastewater, so they don't get into the trouble they got into on the Cape. And...
That's an important meeting.
When you're doing that, Jim?
Huh?
When you're doing that?
Tomorrow morning at 9:00.
Yeah.
Zoom.
Send me the link.
The, the other meeting, Manny, is with the Healy Administration in New Bedford, talking about infrastructure priorities in the South Coast.
Funding, funding, federal funding and not federal funding.
She's doing that in person?
I don't, I don't know if it's her personally, but...
It's not her.
Because she's coming down tomorrow.
It's 1:00.
Yeah, I'm gonna be meeting with her, yeah.
Where?
Pier 52.
Where's that?
For Born Lake Marina. Actually gonna introduce it to my mother, so to solve some of these problems.
This is Healy?
Yep.
So, this meeting is at 1:00?
Normally she, when she comes down, she drives around, so she might pop in at one of them meetings.
Yeah, it's in New Bedford.
It's in New Bedford, at the Buzzers, at the Bristol County Community College campus.
Yeah, the Nowick, National Shore.
In the wind farm.
Wind Institute, down on the waterfront.
If I could find my way to it.
Look for the biggest building.
It's down behind Wambsada?
It's past Wambsada. You gotta get on MacArthur Drive, the Service Road, and then you'll see big signs, but it's, it's south of Wambsada.
Yeah, they, they just sent out the invitations on Monday, and expect people to drop everything, and be there on Wednesday, it's like...
It's Quentin Palfrey, so I, that's the name of the person doing this, so I don't, I don't think the governor will be there.
But, anyway, so I would now, and can't motion to adjourn.
So move.
Section.
All of us in favor?
Aye. Thank you all, 17...